Can I touch your screen?
Uh huh.
Um, my.
Uh huh. Oh, I see Natasha, there's some success. Sky, journey.
Blue.
Blue. Like this gets us rocking and rolling. Natasha's phone. Natasha, can you hear me? You were coming in from external.
I can hear you. Like, I don't know, I don't know what's wrong with, I'm doing this on my phone and I'm at Verizon trying to do a phone switch and so I don't have any video, but I thought, it doesn't say that I'm calling in, but everyone's like, blacked out, so I don't know what's happening.
Okay, okay, well, you can hear us, that's, that's a good start.
Yeah.
Better than, better than Joan, maybe Ron right now, and April was trying to get in Dorothy, and it's, not gonna be able to make it today.
Like, it clicked, yeah, I don't know, I guess this is showing me as a call, but I have the screen on and I see everyone's names, but I can't see anybody.
Sometimes it shows, and I'm not the tech expert at all, but sometimes it shows like when someone's calling in, like a number, but it actually shows you, I mean, it's got just NV and a little circle, but it's got, it just says, your name, doesn't have like a dial-in number or anything.
Do you guys have your cameras on? Cause I don't see anybody.
We don't, I don't, here I am. Is that change anything?
Nope, I just see a black screen. Yeah, I don't know what's going on. Oh, wait, I see Monica.
Okay. That's a good, that's a good thing, um, see. Might have to tell April and Ron to call in as well. I know Alan Etzler had a meeting earlier, completely unrelated, that I was supposed to be on, and he was having all sorts of problems with Teams, so it might be, it might be.
I was, the team says this morning, it made me, I had to reset my password, I had to, I had other Teams meetings and it was not working at all. Like, I was, I tried to reset it before this one, but I had to end up doing a call instead of an actual Teams meeting. Like, I just keep getting alerts, it's like, every time someone sends a message, it says, no, sent a message.
Weird. So Jen, try to get everybody to call in, at least we can do that, maybe. It's better than nothing. Hi.
It's cause it's Friday.
I know, that's why it's so hard.
Hello.
Hey.
Hi, it's Elaine.
Oh, hey Elaine, good, okay, you got called in. I don't know what you, um, yeah, I don't know what the problems are so far. We have Natasha, um, from the Planning Commission, and then Monica and Pam and Scott Wexler, our attorney, and Jen, and all our IT folks during with, um, our communication, so we're seeing if we can get. Get everybody else at least called in, it's not as much fun not seeing everybody's smiling faces, but. If we can at least talk through some of the stuff, that would be a start.
And now these are gonna work.
Joan, are you here?
Ron is here.
Oh, Ron is here, hey, Ron.
Having fun?
No. I am, I am, just, like, it's hard enough, right? Let's make it a little more challenging.
Hi, this is Ron.
Hi, Joan, yay, alright. We have Joan. We've got Joan, we've got Ron, we've got Elaine, our new planning commission member, welcome, that usually goes much smoother than this, um, we've got Nat- we've got Natasha. So I think we're missing April, I know Dorothy, um, was not going to be able to join us this afternoon. And then, in terms of staff, we've got Jen and me and Monica and Pam and Scott Wexler and Shrata. So I think everybody from staff is here, if we want to see if April, she was emailing. Give her a second or two and see if we can get everybody at least on the line.
Um, can I, before. Before we call the meeting to order, can I just make one statement?
Absolutely.
Okay, I'm not sure, the chances are I'm not gonna be able to make it on Monday, I'm up in New York now, we had some emergency babysitting, which has not been fun.
Sorry.
So, yeah, thanks, so, uh, hopefully I'll be able to make it down by Monday, but, um, everything's kinda up in the air here.
Okay, well, thank you, I hope, hope all is, let's see, I hope all is, um, okay, and do what you need.
Well, my, my grandson got home from the hospital just about, uh, five hours ago, so, things, things are looking good, well, yeah, he had three febrile seizures in, uh, in twelve hours, so.
Let's see, I think we got Natasha, Dorothy said she should be around, uh, we got Joan and Elaine, um.
I should be there unless for some reason we have icy roads or bad roads, I'm still, I'm still driving one-handed, so.
Good call. The same as that, too. If it's, if it's bad, you know, we have our, our plan for, you know, we need to handle everything, yeah.
Alright, so who of the commission is on? Now we have Ron, Natasha, and Emily and me.
We have.
Elaine. Elaine, sorry.
That's okay, my ID badge was typed out as Jennifer, so.
That's a bit confusing, Elaine, well, welcome Elaine, um. Wanna wait for April or should we get started?
I think we can get started, um. She got a little bit relaxed, if we can get started, I think Ken, and if she can jump on, um, otherwise, I'll make sure to send the link, um, to the YouTube video, it's not gonna be much of a video, but the YouTube recording, um, to, um, Dorothy and April as well, so everybody has everything they need in advance on Monday.
Alright, alright, so then we'll call the meeting to order, this is the February 7th pre-planning commission meeting, meeting. And, um, just for the commission, what I will do, since we can't see each other, is we will do a roll call for questions after each presentation, um, was that April?
Yes.
Great. Awesome.
Hi.
Alright, so, um, what I was just saying is that I will do a, uh, a roll call for questions after each presentation by staff, just so that we don't, so we can figure out what we're all doing here, since we can't see each other. Alright, so the first agenda item is the rules of procedure, and I'm assuming that, um, Gabrielle and Scott are going to, gonna update us on that one?
Absolutely, so, uh, this is the second meeting we're having on this, we, we talked about it last month, I'm kind of in a workshop fashion, but, um, the intent for Monday is to approve our updates to the rules of procedure. The biggest change you're going to see, um, is in the section four, which is on voting, uh, we had a lot of discussion about the distinction between abstaining and being eligible and, uh, recusing and all that good stuff, so we've kinda reworked that entire section. Uh, I hope it's a lot more concise, we kinda grouped all of the, um, all of the different kind of, uh, situations into their own subsection to talk about, uh, what, what that means for voting and such. So that's the, the significant change was just in that section four, you have a clean copy, uh, where all of the track changes have been accepted, um, and then you also have a marked up version that's showing you in underlines where text is being added and brackets where it's gonna be deleted, so you can kinda, it's hard to go between both of them, but, we, you know, one version is showing you the final product and the, the marked up version is showing you, um, what, what changes were made specifically. With that, I'm happy to answer any questions.
Alright, let's, um, start with, uh, Ron, do you have any questions? Ron? Okay, that's weird.
Oh no, did we lose Ron? I only see three phone numbers now, I wonder if we lost him.
Alright, well, I'll circle back, um, Natasha, any questions?
No, thanks.
Elaine, any questions?
No, pretty straightforward, thanks.
Alright, April?
No questions.
Um, is Ron back yet?
I am back.
Ron, are you on mute? Okay.
Uh, do you have any questions on the rules of procedure?
No, thank you.
Alright, great, well then we'll move on to the next, um, items on the agenda, and this is, um, the Subaru Service Center, and we have, uh, PC24762FSI, the final site plan, PC24763FSCB, the, um, forest conservation plan, Monica?
Yes, thank you very much, um, and thanks for doing the intro there, um, yes, so this is an existing Subaru dealership, they're adding on a, a big service center on the back, um, they're also requesting three modifications, um, we're supporting all of them, but the one, they're requesting one to not do any landscaping, they're putting in a new parking lot in the back of forty-four spaces, and they didn't want to put in any landscaping, um. I recommended that they put in at least three shade trees to help kind of mitigate the heat island effect, I talked to the applicant about it, they are on board with that, they don't see any problems with that, so that's not going to be a surprise to them. Um, for forest conservation, they're doing all of their planting on-site, um, so that's kind of a slam dunk, um, and other than that, there's really, there's not much to say, it's a pretty clean plan.
Alright. Um, let's go through the commissioners, Ron?
No, thank you.
Natasha?
No, thanks.
Elaine?
No, thanks.
April?
No questions.
I don't have any questions either, this is, uh, moving pretty quickly.
Yeah, very good.
Alright, well then we'll, we'll move on to the next item, which is PC24-664ANX, um, the High Glen Annexation. Pam?
Yes, um.
Your.
I turned my cam, oh, there it is, a little delay there, um, you know, this is the seventy-two acres out there by, uh, Whittier and Christopher's Crossing, that, you know, um, the Osherman, um, investment, or this rates, called the Great Southern Annexation, they, they're calling it the Great Southern, but it's the High Glen Annexation as they applied it. And, you know, it includes the church and a residential property, and then, of course, all the Osherman property there, and, um, of course, they're asking for R4 for part of this, um, annexation, and they have laid out, um, their, uh, ability to have water and sewer, of course, we're surrounded by, um, the city pretty much with Tuscarora and Whittier, and, um, coming down through with their, uh, utility lines, um, traffic engineers laid out, also to the amount of payments for the regional, uh, road improvements, um, that they're looking for payments for. Um, we've also, um, have said to them in this, uh, annexation agreement, that they need to include the annual consumer price index escalation on their, on their, uh, payments, and that would also include, um, a path that they are, um, going to build through the property there, uh, that is separate from the regional road improvements, uh, they've also here have, uh, the fiscal analysis, uh, where they're gonna be paying their annual payment of two thousand dollars for every two years, up by five hundred dollars until the, they kick in with the regular city taxes. And we do feel, of course, they're consistent with the comprehensive plan, they are, um, like I said, uh, projecting that eventually. projecting that eventually they would be developed as, um, uh, units there as a PND. And they also are saying that they will provide the parkland, um, but not the forest conservation on site as a conditions of, um, the annexation. And I have listed out, um, a, a paragraph that I would like to see changed in the annexation, um, papers. The way they had worded it, um, I didn't see that acceptable, and I have put a new paragraph in there for their, um, for their consideration and everything. So, that's it. And then, of course, they'll come back for the second hearing.
Okay. Um, Ron?
Yeah, wasn't there something about, um, um, a debate about one or two, uh, areas of ingress and egress to the site?
Yeah, that is something that, um, uh, they're on board with, also with their, uh, annexation agreement that, uh, Marvin Osherman's property, that's the, the one that they would allow that access to still remain there along Christopher's Crossing. But in the future, all the other development and everything would be accessing off of Yellow Springs Road. Um, uh, as for Christopher's Crossing being a main arterial that is like, goes through and around the city. And Chirion does, uh, support the fact that you don't want to have, uh, multiple accesses, um, coming out on an arterial like that, that you go to the lower, um, road classification. And, um, Yellow Springs coming in, a small section of it is an arterial, but the second section is a little bit of a collector or, and also to, uh, follows through with the, um, county. So, um, that gives them some direction when they come forward. I think we mentioned that at the workshop, or Chirion did, that we, um, are looking for this to be, um, in the annexation agreement, which they have agreed to, um, so that whoever comes in to develop the land in the future knows that they have these restrictions and they would design their property to that, to reflect that, so.
Okay, and, uh, the, uh, paragraph that you mentioned before, so we, we don't know what their reaction is. We're only going to find out, um, on Monday.
About the forest conservation, you mean?
Yeah, the paragraph that you reworded.
Yeah.
In the annexation.
Yeah, and, um, I was trying to think if I had that in the workshop summary, and I can't remember. But, um, I, I know that they have not revised their annexation agreement to reflect this, so I would say now that we're going to have to get some feedback on that.
Okay, thank you. That's all I have.
Just so I can add to it, um, you know, the annexations, uh, the Planning Commission is making a recommendation to the City Council, uh, you know, there, so this is your independent recommendation for both, subsequently, is this an appropriate annexation per our comp plan and, and per the extension of services, you know, have we, is this a timely and appropriate annexation is kind of the, the big question. Uh, if, if the commission does find that this is a timely and appropriate annexation, then you're making recommendations, um, about terms of the annexation agreement that could be included. So things like the applicant should be required to do X, Y, and Z, um, include, you know, meet all their forest on site or provide all their parkland. So, you know, it is the, the applicant, I guess where I'm going with this, is the applicant doesn't have to, it's, it's their petition to bring forward and their agreement. Um, you know, it's, it's not infrequent that we don't bring something forward to the City Council with maybe a difference of opinion on terms of the agreement, and the Planning Commission's, uh, recommendation could be different even than the staff's recommendations to the City Council, and that's something that they would wade all through.
Great, thank you.
Natasha?
Uh, no, I'm good, thanks.
Alright, Elaine?
I'm good, thank you.
April?
No questions, thank you.
Alright, so I just have one question about, um, the forest conservation not being on site. Was that something that we talked about at the workshop?
Uh, no, I had recommended that the forest conservation be planted all on site. They have some wetlands and a sensitive critical area. But, um, I assume the reason why they balked at that is because down the road, whoever would be developing it, they would see maybe that they're not getting their, um, maximum density in or something because they have to plant or whatever, you know. We do have a problem getting people sometimes to accept for planting everything on site, so that was an un- a questionable thing that they did not want to commit to, even though they committed to their parkland, which was, uh, which kind of surprised me a little bit, but I guess it shouldn't have really, because that, they can figure out, if they're only limited to a certain amount of units, they can figure out exactly what their parkland is. Um, they can also figure out what exactly their forest conservation is, but if they are not in a position sometimes to double dip forests with parks because of the wetlands and stuff like that, it's kind of a, um, they feel a lot of, uh, land area from the development, and they sacrifice the forest instead of the parkland in this case, as a commitment. So, um, also too down the road with forests, I guess they would consider too that they're able to do landscaping credits, street tree credits, to satisfy that, but, um, and we recognize that too. We, um, so I'm just, um, saying that this is something that I would like to see as a condition to accept the forest conservation all on site, as much as, as large as seventy-two acres of this property. But, um, if I did put the caveat in there in the report, as I said, in, um, tailoring, tailoring that paragraph of forest the way they, um, had stated it. And that gives us the fact that we know we're going down the road, have to review it when, um, a plat comes in or when a site plan comes in.
Just to clarify, that we're looking at Paragraph 9, it, both in terms of the forest and the parkland dedication, they're saying that the applicant is, uh, agrees to make reasonable efforts to provide on forest requirements entirely on site and to provide parkland entirely on site. Uh, they're, they're caveating with that, that the, they agree that, and we would agree if we agree to this language, that this does not override, supersede, or abrogate the review and approval authority of the Planning Commission and the parties, blah, blah, blah. Uh, basically what that Paragraph 9 is saying, that they are committing to try to make reasonable efforts to provide parkland and forest conservation on site, but that basically it, that paragraph does not otherwise, um, dictate that the requirements of Section 608 and 721 don't also apply, that this, the, um, that this does not state they have to provide either entirely on site. It's saying that they're going to go through the process. The process is, you know, obviously, both for parkland and for forest conservation, that we want to, you know, try to obtain those things on site. But it, Paragraph 9 is not committing them to absolutely providing both of them on site. They're basically saying they'll try their best and follow the rules and the code, which as we know, the rules and the code allow for off-site parkland or off-site forest conservation, or fee in lieu of, or any number of things.
And with other annexations of this size, have the annexation agreements all included something that said the forest and park must be all on site, or is this, is this paragraph typical or atypical?
Uh, we have advocated on more recent annexations to have them both commit to, um, to providing both on site. Um, in terms of acreage and how that compares, uh, I would have to look. I believe Kristoff, they committed to providing all of their parkland on site because that was one of the, um, they were dedicating that very large chunk. Uh, I don't think in Win, I think in Win Penny it was similar language. We can get that and confirm for you on, on Monday.
Okay.
And also look at it proportionate to what, kind of the estimated requirement would be for each of those.
Yeah, that would be good to have that information on Monday.
Yeah, I'll pull out some and put it in a, in a, a small table for you for percentages and stuff.
Perfect, that would be good. Alright, did any of the other commissioners have anything that, that came up to mind while, while you were listening to this?
No, none for me. This is April.
Alright.
None for me.
Okay.
I'm good.
Alright, well then I think, I think we're, uh, done with this, um, oh, I did have one more question. What's, I mean, it probably doesn't make any difference, but what's the difference between the High Glen designation and the Great Southern designation?
There's, there's, it's the property itself is, some of the properties are under Great Southern, like El- Elsie or something. Investment, Great Southern investment. And they were going to call it Great Southern, but they applied for it for the annexation under High Glen. So it's just a name, it's a name thing. Um...
Oh, okay, so...
So really, Great Southern is not the annexation that, uh, label or whatever is going to go through, uh, through. It's going to be High Glen.
Okay.
But a lot of the properties, the majority of the properties are under Great Southern ownership.
Wow, okay, great, thanks for clarifying that. Um, alright, so the last item on our agenda is PC24-665ZMA, um, zoning map amendment for the Faith Reformed Presbyterian Church, um, to put in what the IST overlay on the church property.
Yeah.
Pam, so yours?
Yeah, this is pretty straightforward, too, that they had to wait for the annexation, of course, to come in and, and do their, their zoning, and as it was explained in the report, um, we couldn't put the IST in an annexation, uh, process. It had to come in after they were annexed in with their zoning and then changed the zoning with a floater over, or overlay, whatever, of the IST. So it's only going over the church. It's about, what I have here, four point oh eight acres, and it's existed there for quite a long time. Um, it does, uh, you know, uh, uh, suit the area, whatever. Um, it's been looked at, you know, that it will have all the access for water and sewer, and, um, I don't know what else to tell you here, but when they, if they would make changes, we would see changes come in for this, but, but they're not anticipating any real changes or anything with this property. It's going to remain the church. They just want to make it not, uh, so it's not non-conforming under an R4 zone. They want to be under an IST zone, which we have over our churches and, and, and all throughout the city. So that is pretty much it.
Okay, great, thank you. Um, Ron?
No, thank you.
Natasha?
No, thanks.
Elaine?
No, thanks.
April?
No questions, thank you.
Alright, and I don't have any questions either.
Hey, I just wanted to tell you, I did, uh, one thing I wanted to say. I had here prior to second meeting, I wanted a little bit more explanation from their justification statement. Um, I had looked at that and I thought, well, maybe this is not needed. I will look at that more, but, um, and we will clear that up and see if they're going to have to resubmit anything to, uh, more for that clarification or not, and look at that. But that would be the next hearing.
Right, I was going to say, both of these, the annexation and the zoning map amendment are both first hearings, correct?
Right.
So we're, so we're not doing any, make any decisions on either of those this month.
Yeah, no voting, um, right.
Alright, that sounds good. Uh, before we close the meeting out, is there anything else we need to address or discuss?
This is April, no questions for me.
Nothing here.
I think we're good from a staff perspective. I appreciate everybody bearing with us with our technical difficulties.
Yep, just need to figure out why, how we can all sign in as guests the next time.
Yes.
Alright.
Um, while we have, while we have April on the phone, do we, uh, she wasn't part of the conversation that we were having in terms of quorum?
Oh, for Monday?
Yeah.
Right.
April, we've been just saying, um, Monday, we're between weather and, and Ron, um, might be, um, unavailable. Uh, we were just wanting to firm up with everybody who was going to be there, and, um, if anything changes with anyone, um, to make sure you let us know as soon as possible.
Okay. Oh, no problem.
And if, um...
Yeah, I thought it said if you would not be able to attend, so I, I know I'll be able to attend.
Excellent, and if, if weather is wonky for some reason, um, we might all cancel and we will be sure to be in communication with everybody.
Okay, perfect.
Sounds good.
Sounds good.
Okay.
Alright, well, it sounds like the meeting is, um, we can adjourn the meeting. We will see everybody on Monday.
Thank you, have a good weekend.
Good weekend, everybody.
Bye.
Alright, bye.